Planet Commission, September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, it's about six fifteen. We've got two matters on the agenda, the first, the variance in special exception application for Capitol Heights Phase Two. Jacob, you want to say anything here, or what's the, what's the procedure?
Yeah, so this meeting, as we're discussing, is a little bit more unique than our typical meetings. The applicants are here today to kind of give the board, the public, kind of a general overview of their project, considering its complexity. Because it will not fit typically in a standard meeting. So what was provided to the board today was a project brief from the planning bureau that kind of goes over any general concerns at specific sites. Just a quick overview of each project, what the applicant's proposing. So I guess, yeah, so generally, just generally speaking, you know, the intent, the hope is to potentially have the commission vote at the next planning commission reading, meeting, the regular scheduled meeting, October fifth. So I guess, let the proceed with the applicant at this point, and then if any comments from the public. So I'm not really even gonna go over as we typically deal, you know, with a staff overview. So, yeah, I'll just let the applicant kind of have the opportunity to give you guys a presentation. And that way you guys can ask questions, and if you want staff point of view of any parts of the project, be happy to provide that.
All right, thank you. The applicant would identify himself and get started, we'd appreciate it.
Yep, Matt Long with Midtown Redevelopment LLC. Do a summary. Yep, joining me today will be Rich Scribble, Matt Crop, and Chris Price. All on advisory rules. This is, we'll be starting with Capitol Heights. This is infill development of nearly every, every lot that's been vacant, majority of them since Agnes in nineteen seventy-two. So right at the fifty-year marker. This is a continuation of our Capitol Heights redevelopment. We went through the process last year to have Phase One started. We're breaking ground here in October, finally, now that the land development plans are recorded. This is a proposal of three mixed-use buildings with apartments above, first-floor commercial, three sixteen-unit apartment complexes, a twelve-unit affordable home complex, and four townhomes with parking scattered throughout each one. What do we want to, you said, public comment, and do we do it before or after?
I do after, one.
First of all, the buildings.
Before, uh, before we even get started, is anybody here in the community wish to make any comments? And you'll be given another chance, you'll be given a chance later on to speak also. Want to give us any comments now? Gonna hold off? All right.
Trying to get my bearing here on the paperwork.
This one, okay, building two, yeah, that one, building one's approved. Yep.
Okay, okay, I was wondering where we started going to.
Yes, that was sixteen-ten North Fourth Street.
Yep, that was the senior. Yep, Building Two is a mixed-use building with first-floor commercial, and I believe plan here could be six apartments above. No, correct, correct, yep.
Yep.
Yep, so Bill, Building Two is a ten thousand eight hundred square foot mixed-use building with first-floor commercial and residential apartments on the second and third floor, the six-two bedroom and thirty-six hundred square feet of first-floor retail and a surface parking lot directly behind the property with twelve spaces, six of which would be used for the residential portion of this building as proposed, and two for the commercial.
And the only comments from staff on this building, so we will be recommending this building be approved. We'll have conditions prepared at the next meeting of what they may be. So there's two points of discussion, so the applicant will have to file a street vacation, known as Judd Alley. And we will also recommend that they work with the current residents that may be utilizing that alley currently. It looks like there's about one house there that uses that for rear access. So one of those conditions will recommend that there's some kind of easement to access that rear.
And I'd like to note that we are working, because I know a big factor of this is how it's going to be presented to the zoning hearing board. We are working with the solicitor now to clarify their stance on how this could be voted on, or it could be a by-building vote, or where buildings could be excluded via a condition or something that way, rather than a just direct yes or no. That's a big part of this, because there's been some back and forth where, you know, initially it was yes or no, whereas we're looking to do like other municipalities do, where buildings can be excluded.
And our office has been in touch with them as well, and discussions on how to handle the voting on this particular package with the zoning solicitor, yes. They were certainly open to discussing it not just being an all-or-nothing proposition, which doesn't make a lot of sense from our view.
Jacob, what's the relief thought on this building?
Um, so there's going to be relief from different development standards up here. Yeah, so for the use, because all these buildings, all these sites, and actually for both applications, this is all residential medium density. So you're going to see that relief for the multifamily use for every building, and it's involved except for the townhomes. And I believe they will, you know, impervious lot coverage area if, if the impervious pavers can't be used for the parking lot. So we'll, we'll have that as a condition that they use impervious pavers. But sometimes stuff just comes up with the site, like limestone, topography, things like that. And then there's just various relief from the development standard for setback encroachment. And we, and we feel that, you know, these lots here are very unique, very hard to develop how they exist. So we believe there's pretty sufficient justification for relief.
What's the required setback?
Um, so in the front, it's to basically match the existing buildings on the block, and I believe there's, I can't remember, there's a house in the front here, but if not, it would be five feet or up to the property line. I mean, in this case, I think it's up to the property line. And the rear's ten-foot setback, and the sides is four feet. Yeah.
All right. If you have any more questions on number one?
Oh, yes, sorry, I do. My only question actually was about that vacation, the alley vacation. You had the chance to start any conversation?
Yes, including, yep, including, I don't know if it's the particular resident that parks there all the time, but I did see someone parking there, approached them, this was last summer, gave them a rundown that they'd still be able to access, because we've essentially just take the road that's there now, vacate it, and put a new road in place, and they would still have access to the roof of their property.
All right, let's move on to Building Three.
Building Three is a similar building, but smaller, it's a sixty-one hundred fifty-six square foot mixed-use. This building in particular has had interest from multiple daycare centers. It will be adjacent to the new community garden area. I don't believe it's illustrated on the map, but if you would recall from last year with the development of Phase One, we've allotted that space, it's a two-hundred-and-twelve-foot-long-by-about-sixteen-foot-wide space, and not much else can be developed. One of the things we would do there is if it'd be a daycare, we'd help them with our application to take part of that land, have as an outdoor playground for daycare use. Now, this is being submitted without a usage, as noted, and it would have four apartments above.
For the record, it's in corner fourth and Cotter, is that correct?
Hamilton.
And again, generally speaking, you know, planning bureau, you know, will be recommending approval for this building as well. As the applicant mentioned, it's a pretty difficult lot to develop, considering its dimensions. And the, just the building itself is pretty appropriate in the area, it's a three-story building, which will be pretty consistent with height and with being built up to the setback lines, very appropriate with the urban form.
And giving the potential use, if this was a daycare or even, you know, light retail, we'd work with city engineering to have a drop-off point. Most likely, I'd assume on Fourth Street rather than down Hamilton. And that would be kind of for any one of these three corner lot buildings.
Any questions?
No. I don't.
Yeah, if you wish to add any more on Building Three.
Jacob, do you want to talk about your comments?
Yeah, so Building Three. Yes, they'll actually, at least what appears on the site plan, I believe there'll be, all right, bear with me one second here. I believe they may be attaching to an existing structure, at least that's what it appears. So the applicant, and this happens in a few different buildings in both applications, so they're going to have to coordinate with neighbors. Definitely would encourage the applicant to begin that process as soon as possible with attaching to existing dwellings. That's something that hasn't happened too much in the city, so I know, at least after talking with codes department, that's going to be a little bit of a new process for how they even go about that. But I do know it will involve some cooperation, coordination with property owners that they're attaching to. And that'll be something more in the land development process, I'm just, just wanted to get out here as early as possible.
All right, before I forget, Asher Green, if you're still, still awake, give any questions regarding Building Three? All right. I guess, moving on to Building Four?
Yep, Building Four is a eleven thousand seven hundred square foot mixed-use, similar to the last two. Will have first-floor retail commercial space and six apartments above. This one will have six parking spaces behind the building, similar to the townhouses that are currently there with the parking arrangement. That would be entered off roads out.
This two is on the corner, it's on a different corner.
The opposite corner of Hamilton, yes.
Hamilton's fourth.
And I would notice staff comment, so having that parking on the rear there is very appropriate. I mean, that's how these lots were reconfigured, is to have the parking off that back alley. So that does, though, require some variances, since it's not for a single-family home, how the parking's configured in multiple spaces. So it is viewed kind of as a parking lot, so it is doing some setback encroachments and different development standard where variances are needed. But, you know, staff, we feel that, given the location being designed for parking off that alley, that, you know, gives sufficient justification. I mean, it would also be consistent with the development pattern of the adjacent row homes.
Is that essentially considered a driveway, then, you know, that runs between Hamilton and Clinton?
That gets tricky.
Like, how does that, is that a city street, or?
This part, I forgot the name of the alley. I knew, I do know some of these are public right-ofways, and some of them are, actually the parcels go over top of it. I can't recall the specific site, if this is a public right-ofway, I can look into that and then let you know at the next meeting.
One second, I should be able to actually get, I have the parcel viewer.
You know, confirm with the, because we have a right-ofway map, and I can confirm with engineering.
I said, you know, that might change how they approach.
Yep. And either way, I mean, we would view this as an alley, whether it be public, whether it be private, which you can back into an alleyway. That's our zoning code states that. So it's not like, you know, if this was on Fourth Street, you're backing the Fourth Street, we would say no way, it's a public safety issue. In this case, it's an alley, so it's regardless if it's public or private.
And these were recorded on Dowards Original Two Thousand One Land Development Plan, they didn't exist prior.
Do you have any questions? And you have any more questions?
Uh, yeah, I do, actually, well, this is a general question, another, just a bigger picture question. Have you started talking with CRW about the amount of impervious area that those, these projects will create?
Uh, not yet.
That was just, it was something that I started thinking about when you're looking at how to present these project phases, right, with the multiple lots, where it might be beneficial to, again, it might be beneficial to, again, with CRW looking at a total project coverage area, the limit of disturbance, right, is multiple lots, multiple areas. So there's going to be some areas where you might be able to fit more stormwater management on than others, right? So hopefully they're open to a conversation about that.
Asher, you have any questions? Asher?
Uh, no, no, no questions.
All right, I get it. Jacob, it looks like you have the same comment pretty much this one as you did the last one.
Yeah, similar deal. It's existing to um attaching to existing dwellings.
A- after the public, uh, at the end of this, you'll be given a chance to make comments, but if there's any comments you want to make in the meantime, just raise your hand. All right, just time to move on to number five.
Yep, building five is a sixteen-unit, uh, twenty thousand eight hundred square foot uh multifamily structure uh with two-bedroom, two-bath apartments. And this parcel and this cluster of uh the project will have a forty-space parking lot created. Twenty of which will be used for this building. The other twenty spaces will be used for the adjacent buildings.
And a staff comment, um, for building five and actually for the project sites five through eight. Um, so all of these lots have been reconfigured, as the applicant mentioned, um, I believe it was two thousand one. Um, so right now, as these lots are configured, they could accommodate um by right townhomes, um, including the off-street parking from the rear. Um, so that is a little bit concerning when this goes to zoning for these sites on these lots. Um, because the applicant will have to demonstrate some kind of hardship or variance, um, you know, to to get this relief that they're requesting. Um, so, you know, from building five to eight, um, at this point, what we have, what we've had submitted, um, you know, we will be recommending that this either be continued or that the applicant provides further information. Um, just because the justification for the variances right now just aren't here with the application. Um, so just want to make the applicant aware of that, the board of that, of kind of how we view this. Um, you know, these sites would be a more appropriate uh to develop by right townhomes. Um, and that's kind of the position uh from the planning bureau and then with discussions with the administration um as well. Um, so, I mean, we would even recommend, you know, that the applicant consider maybe even separating out uh building five through eight. Um, and that way they can move forward with the other sites, um, where they're much more likely to get approval and can move forward.
About how many times will it fit on this?
Um, so on this particular site, um, I don't know off the top of my head without looking at the parcel, um, parcel map. But basically how the parcels exist right now, um, you could build by right attached townhomes. Um, I I I don't know the number off the top of my head, though.
For the record, this building five is located on the west side of Fulton Street. It runs the whole, whole length of the block with Hamilton on the north, Clinton Street on the south. Alley on the west. And you have any questions? Jamie?
No.
Asher, you have any questions about building five?
No, I don't.
Staff, do you have any more to add to this?
Um, nothing to add at this, at this moment now.
To speak on five through eight, um, we will be tightening up our justification for variances and special exceptions on these. Given the factor that this infrastructure, you know, someone walks by and peers, yes, you could use this for townhomes. These are subdivided for that. This infrastructure's been in the ground for twenty years. It's all worthless. It would all have to be ripped up, ripped up and
Really?
I mean, this, you have sewer lines that are broke, have stuff stuffed in. Um, you have gas lines that have been torn apart. You have stubs for water lines that aren't there anymore. This, you know, there's not much here. These were configured for eleven hundred and to thirteen hundred square foot townhomes. The original developer went bankrupt building them. The second developer uh in HRA meetings uh claimed he would do anything to get out of developing these any farther there before he goes bankrupt and a a number of expletives in the the uh recorded meeting minutes there. So, you know, saying that these could be building conformance is is, I believe, incorrect.
And I, and I would encourage the applicant, like, what you're saying to provide, you know, just further documentation of those, you know, instances that would make it more difficult to develop. Um, that would just be helpful, you know, to give that to the zoning hearing board.
Uh, I I would say the documentation is going to be essential, like anecdotal will not work. You know, and I realize the other developers came and went, but the damage you're referring to should be able to be documented one way or another and would go a long way to satisfying.
Yep, and that's going to be where with the civil engineer giving an update saying that, yes, this infrastructure would have to be replaced. It would have to be updated. You'd be going through a whole new land development process to try to update this. When you're looking at, you know, one of the aspects of this entire application is working to meet the city's goal of having twenty percent participation of affordable housing. And simple thing is you have to be able to supplement that. And the only way to supplement that is to try to lower your square foot cost to get enough income re- revenue generated to build those sections of that. And that plays hand in the hand with this right here. The higher density request is for the ability to have the twenty percent mark and to be able to afford to build these and not go bankrupt.
Are there particular buildings in this phase two that you are looking to do as part of the affordable housing?
Yes, the, so when you, we kind of separate this out a little bit as the west side and the east side. So on the east side of Fourth Street, you have those sixteen, sixteen and sixteen. And then you, to match that twenty percent, you would have the twelve unit truly affordable. It would be follow the fair market rent guidelines. That would sit along Fifth Street. So you'd have those four buildings of that, those four buildings, twenty percent would be low income. And then for the uh three mixed-use buildings, you also have four affordable townhomes. So you would take that number of units and you'd have your twenty percent by having those four townhomes. And that was a request to the administration that it not just be affordable apartments, that there also be townhomes as yards. And we were to accommodate that. And again, that, you know, you you bear that cost and you have to figure it in throughout the project.
And I would note, um, the applicant is not going through like the formal affordable housing ordinance, um, which is understandable considering that um, it's pending a curative amendment. So, um, just wanted to make a note that it's not through the formal affordable housing process. And definitely, you know, the applicant's going to get a lot of questions about the affordability, you know, moving forward with the land development process before council. Um, so definitely encourage them to try to find ways to you know, make sure that the affordability of these is some way reserved, um, just because that'll be an important part of the land development process with council.
All right, most of the discussion we just had in the last five, ten minutes rises six through eight, right? I mean, I I see no
I would just say, yes, just general specific comments, um, that many of the details, some of these concerns I put in here will be more land development issues. Um, I did think it was relevant to put it in here just because, um, you know, things such as like lot uh dimension measurements, there was some difference between county information, what the applicant had. Um, we all know county information isn't always as reliable. Um, but you know, I was looking at the, some of the lots and it looked potentially that some of these, some of the county information might have been correct. Um, so I would encourage the applicant to have a survey um performed on these lots just in case um, it affects the zoning relief. Um, so they might need additional relief or they might not be able to build a parking lot to the correct standards if the measurements are off, um, which could delay their process further. Um, so just a suggestion to the applicant to make sure everything is going to fit within the lot dimensions that they provided.
All right, and for the recorded record, uh, lots six, seven and eight are on the south side of uh Clinton Street uh between fourth and the fifth. And you have any more questions on these three?
I don't think so.
Jamie, do you have any?
No.
Asher, you have any questions regarding uh lots six through eight?
No.
And I would add one additional comment. Um, so for building eight, um, that's the one the applicant's proposing as affordable housing. Bear with me one second here. That they will actually require um a street vacation. Um, so that alleyway behind there, um, that's run south from Clinton Street, kind of loops around back out on North, North Fifth Street. Um, so that is a public right of way, at least with city records. Um, so they're proposing to build a portion of the building uh over that public right of way um, that accesses to North Fifth Street. Um, so that, that will be concerning in the street vacation process, only that, because it would create a dead-end street. Um, so that rear alley behind there that'll be used to access parking. Um, you know, if they vacated a portion of that, that would become a one-way street. The ordinance for street vacation specifically does not allow that. Um, so that could cause some complications as well down the line. Not part of the zoning, but again, just wanted to make the applicant aware as soon as possible.
Is there an alley between seven and eight?
That's all we got. We we want to be vacating the street there.
So
Now I'm confused about that.
So on your, it would be not in the rear, um, it would be to the south of building eight. Yes, um, because you have the measurement there at a hundred and four feet. Um, so I I measured that from the tax map using that tool. Um, so that distance um appears to include the southern part of that public right of way to the south. And you'll see that there's like that little access road south of the parcels there.
Do you have the, you know, the width of the right of way?
Um, I do not know the width off the top of my head.
Is the goal there, Matt, for traffic to enter or exit? Uh, through that alleyway there, that would be
I believe the way it's set up now is that you you enter off
Got access on Clinton Street.
Yeah, and you exit on the fifth. I I don't, I think the existence
That can be
Right of way is big enough for two-way traffic.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's two-way or one-way, but it's very narrow.
Are you going to direct this as like a one-way traffic flow?
Yes. Um.
That's more land development.
Yeah.
But the reason I bring it up is that that could prevent this from being developed. Um, so I just that's why it is relevant at this point. Um wouldn't want to see, you know, wouldn't want to see the applicant spend a lot of money and figure out that they have to redesign um and go through any processes again. So this will likely require one in the land development process, just because it's likely more than forty peak hours. But, you know, in this case, being different sites, being different uses, I frankly don't know the requirement in this case. Um, obviously, being mostly residential, the peak hours isn't that high. Um, that are associated with commercial uses, but I I would assume and I would hope for that there would be a traffic impact study.
Just on this real quick, so we have a ninety-three-foot building shown right now by forty-two. The relief granted would be for the square footage, not particularly a forty-two by ninety-three. And I'm seeing that we have eighteen feet from the parking to the rear portion of the structure. That if this was two or three feet short, without requiring additional relief, we could widen the building to stay within that footprint. I'm pretty, I mean, all these were field-measured lots. I don't feel that any of them are inaccurate. But if that were the case, for some reason, if it was all three or four feet, in this particular situation, especially, we would be able to recon- we would be able to change it, the rectangle depth, to keep the same square footage.
And that would be our recommendation too, would be them to reconfigure to avoid the street vacation. And I'm sure the applicant would prefer to avoid a additional street vacation application.
Yeah, we we have no intent of vacating that street there. And prior to zoning, we'll we'll just have a survey done again to clarify the ninety-three, and if not, we can update the CAD to show, you know, a ninety-foot building that's forty-four feet wide.
And I think the, so there's still the two townhomes, the Logan Street townhomes, Clinton Street townhomes, um, at the end. Uh, so those are going to be by right. Uh, they're not going to be requesting for the use. Um, in the case where they do need zoning relief, it's going to be for the requirement, they have a fifteen hundred square foot lot area for the dwelling. Because the lots being proposed are going to be smaller than that. Um, and this is a little bit of a unique case where the applicant will be creating non-conforming lots. Um, typically, we wouldn't be supportive of that. Um, in this case, they're actually coming off of lots that are even, they're making it closer to conformance, um, I guess you could say. And given kind of the layout of these sites, um, we do think it would be appropriate since they're making it closer to being conformity. Um, so we, we will be recommending approval um for that relief, for that fifteen hundred square foot density. Um, and then some of the setback encroachments, which would be consistent with the townhomes nearby where they're pretty much all encroaching in the setbacks. Um that's just the only, just an additional comment on that. Um I I do would request the applicant clarify if these are attached or detached. This was a little confusing with the, because the rendering shows a fully detached home. Um, because that could affect potentially what release being requested. Um, but just to provide that clarification uh would be helpful before going to zoning.
And to clarify, the each cluster of two will be attached.
Okay, so these would be two semi-detached.
Yep, and we can update that prior to zoom.
Okay, thanks.
These are going to be across the street from building two that we've
Uh, no, these would sit behind building two, uh, two of them would sit behind building two going uh farther down Clinton. And then when you would go down Clinton toward the third, you take a right-hand turn. You have two existing houses there. Well, you have one house that faces Clinton, you turn right. You have two that face on Logan. These would be directly after these, those two. And prior to, this would be adjacent to the new community garden and potentially playground area. Playground area is on the Fourth Street side, though. This would be on the Logan Street side.
And we do appreciate the applicant, um, matching the existing setbacks in the front, um, to the other townhomes, which is appropriate uh for urban design and the surrounding community.
Can you give me questions about Logan Street and Clinton Street?
Nope.
Jamie?
No.
Asher? Asher, you have any questions on Logan Street or Clinton Street?
No, I don't.
I think it's the second item on the agenda. Is that what's going on now?
Yes.
Second item is Okay, yeah, yeah, now would be a good time to ask the public. Anybody in the public have any questions or comments? Regarding what you So, so the microphone and and again, you'll have another chance to come. I just stand up right there. Uh, yeah, give us your name, your address, and then tell us what yours.
So this meeting actually filled in a lot of blanks. I need I am Okay, and that would be, I guess, uh specifically in regards to building five, six, seven, eight. Um, I have been talking to the developers and attending as many meetings as possible uh just to figure out exactly what the proposal is. A lot of things that were proposed, um, have gotten A lot of things that were proposed have gotten better. I definitely still have some concerns, so I'm going to look at my notes, I apologize. But I will say one thing in general that I've said before, and it really feels good to hear that you guys have not yet. Made a final decision regarding five, six, seven, eight was, as a late person, I looked at infill. I am, I've considered a victim of the last two developers. The developer came, literally tried to sell my house to me. The meeting before with expletives, he wanted to get out. My mother asked him point blank, do you plan to finish these homes surrounding these lots? Did not tell me, he had no intentions and wanted out. So I just want to state that, but with infill, a lot of things that I've seen is that you want to put buildings there. That can build and grow and change. When you want to build four identical apartment buildings. Twenty years from now, something happens, you have to tear the entire building down. You can't cut it and paste. And a lot of things that I've seen, again, the character doesn't match our homes. I was talking with Matt about the fact that, of course, you know, if you build with vinyl siding, looks really cookie cutter. Well, now all of these are basically the Magnolia builds. And it is very hard to kind of be in on this island with these six townhomes. I'm so upset. It's an island. It's an island that's going to be surrounded by this new, you know, industrial look, which is great. But it doesn't match the current situation. And Matt proposed a couple of changes that I wish would kind of make us join together with this big existing project when it's done. But we're going to stick out like a sore thumb. And that's just something that is. Yeah, it's really sad. So I did have, again, questions regarding noise, disruption, building. Five, six, seven, eight, I'll talk about them again. Right next door, the big plan was supposed to be a grocery store. Um, I'm surrounded by one-way streets. I don't understand how this is going to work with these four apartment buildings. I mean, roads, alleys, I'll say one way, it's not even clearly designed. Clinton's another one way, not clearly designed. Just coming in and out of my house, my neighbors and I do the fun thing where we kind of dodging each other. We need housing. It's been derelict for way too long. I absolutely agree. I just wish we could kind of find a middle ground where maybe put apartments on the big hill, which would be maybe building eight. Then pop some townhouses and then maybe a two-story commercial and then something else. It just, right now, it just feels like we're being crowded out. It, it looks nothing like at all was proposed. And I get that again, you know, economies of scale, I get they're businesses, they have to make money. It makes sense to have these big apartments, you order a ton of, you know, stuff and you make money. It's not going to work out for us. Not, not in the long run. My plan was to, my kids went off to college, you know, come back home, this is going to be her place. The neighborhood changing the way it's going, I'm going to, I'm going to have it rented. I'm not going to stay. I'm not going to feel comfortable in an environment where there's literally a grocery store and deliveries and people running back and forth. Literally arms length away from my house. It, it just doesn't make sense. So, that's it.
Yeah, I'll, if you're present, I'd be worried for paying attention. We're not going to be voting on anything. You have another chance to adjust the board. Anybody else in the. Let's move on to the second item, which is the variance and special exception application for Marketplace.
So this application, similar situation, multiple sites, multiple buildings. So I guess we'll go through each building the same, let the applicant do brief introduction of what their development is here. And then we'll, I'll provide kind of general staff comments as we go through each building. And then give you kind of some overview comments once the applicant has had an opportunity to kind of go through the sites.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay, so building one is a twelve-unit multifamily dwelling that has fourteen off-street parking spaces. There has been a ton of back and forth with Jeffrey Knight and the planning bureau. On this building, that it doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood and it doesn't. You know, he doesn't like the parking situation, and I want to address that very straightforward here. From an engineering standpoint, there is nothing wrong with this proposed style of parking. There have been several studies, including PENDOT studies, they called it the three-piece study. It was Pottstown, Pottsville and Philadelphia, where they built parking this way in urban settings. And did a study on the safety factor of this situation. But given that this is the identical situation on Fulton Street, one block away. This is the same style of parking that is on all State Street. This is the same style of parking that is on all of the Broad Street Market. This is several areas that are designed this way. And then another portion is that it would take away the eight on-street partner, I believe it's eight parking spaces. Is what they noted in their report. Yeah, but no, it'd be a net increase of eight, taking away four on-street parking spaces. This is vacant land. There's three houses on this street. We're taking away parking that would be for these houses and adding more. So it's still a net gain. I, I really can't stress that enough, that this is a net gain. And then there's the reference to the prior developer who did nothing and had nothing and came up with a quick plan to show twelve apartments. And I would love to note that those apartments that they proposed were on average five hundred square feet each. We're not proposing five hundred square foot apartments. We're proposing two-bedroom, two-bath apartments. That small families and multiple couples or, you know, two people can live in and have parking spaces. These aren't studios and one-bedrooms.
Yeah, we don't have any rendering. I, I, is, is the parking, is, is the garage right there in the front of the building?
Well, it's, it's surface parking, permeable pavers if applicable. Directly in front of the building. And then the new public right of way, and this would be something we'd have to work with engineering, but it's been done, you know, several spots in the city. Is we would create the new public right of way via sidewalk in front of our building and around the parking. We could put, you know, vegetation or screening to delineate the parking space. So you wouldn't be able to walk directly behind the parking spaces. You would follow the sidewalk around.
You anticipate a dedication to the city on the other side of that? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't see any issue with it. When I spoke with the civil engineer, he said it's not normal, but it can be done.
And I'll note some staff comments. As the applicant mentioned, the planning, plan your staff, we, we will be recommending denial as designed, as configured. I mean, these, these spots are occupying a public right of way. If you look at State Street, any other locations in the city where it's designed this way, they are public spaces. So if it's public land, it cannot be private off-street parking. There's also concerns, this is not a alley, this is a street. So encouraging, you know, vehicles backing into the street, many safety concerns. Additionally, having a sidewalk easement through private property is not an appropriate design for sidewalk. Increases the length, will encourage people to continue to walk in the street where the cars may be backing in. There's just a lot of moving parts here. I mean, if you look at the required zoning relief list, it's quite extensive. And most of that involves the number of things either in, in our zoning ordinance that prevents this design. So there's a reason why there's so many requirements that don't allow this type of design regarding safety. And then additionally, the setback, you know, being pretty extensive is also not consistent with the urban form. I mean, it's pretty far back from the public street. So I'm, I'm honestly not even sure if this could get through the further processes with a street vacation. That ordinance is quite extensive. I mean, you have to prove a public good. I mean, I'm assuming if the applicant is trying to vacate a portion of the street, okay, so they're not, so yes, we, this can't be counted for. The relief in that case. So there's just a lot of, you know, issues within our ordinance for having a parking lot designed this way. And as the applicant mentioned, you know, there is a possibility of reconfiguring the site. Likely with less units as the concern was them being, the size being small, so there could be lesser units potentially. Where they could have parking actually on the site in a way that's permitted. You know, it appears that the applicant sort of used the same building design throughout the project. So it was kind of like a copy and paste, not willing to reconfigure the site. We believe that it would be very possible to consider a different reconsideration with that's a relief.
You said you do not have the rendering? Lot of the building itself.
You guys.
At least I don't, I don't believe. I might have it on the after one. Yeah, I got that in your.
LD one.
Right there.
I'm bored of Ford.
That gives a pretty good.
Yeah.
Marion Street a one-way street?
Yes. It was the single worst street in Harrisburg. We had to actually take it all the way down and build it again. Yes. We have to look at it. I'll, I'll say at least one thing, Jeffrey Knight's at least consistent. I know that. When the YMCA, their initial design had parking in front of the buildings. Yeah, again, for the record, we're dealing with lot number one, which is on the eastern side of Marion Street between Alder and Saperd.
I mean, at, at the end of the day, the only traffic that goes down this road right now. For these three houses and when the market. Is there, you know, some people are going to use it to cut the parking. There's no other properties on this. You have Millworks, you have the building Millworks just bought. And you have the guy that owns Sandwich Man for that warehouse there that he doesn't even park there. He parks down the road and he has his fork with that goes in and out occasionally. There's no other traffic on this road.
But, but do you not have to project all of the traffic that will come with all of the new buildings in the neighborhood? Like what will become the pattern? I mean, we can look at the pattern right now, but you're really, you're really.
So, yeah, it'd be self-surfacing. There would be.
Right.
Tenants of these buildings where you have the access.
And from a zoning perspective, I mean, whenever you have a variance, as we all know, you have to demonstrate hardship. You have to give a justification for requesting a variance. So that, that alone, regardless of safety tastes. The amount of relief needed for this design is a bit concerning of it getting through zoning.
All right, you want any other comments about the relief it's being started or you?
Um, no specific comments.
One thing I'd like to note that we have met with the HOA multiple times. And they are acceptable of this design. They've been showing this building. We've sat in meetings with them, shown this particular building. And stressed that this was a concern of the planning bureau. And they want the parking.
And you have any questions?
Oh, I mean, regarding the, oh, I guess we, regarding the parking situation. So what's the trade-off here? If we, if you got rid of those parking spaces, what remains on the street? How many spaces? Six?
Four. Wait, that's four.
Yeah, planning staff noted six.
And that's about, space is twenty-one feet in length, parallel spot.
So that means they would need to request relief for eight spaces? Or no, well, they were requesting really for all of them, but I'm, yeah, right, but I'm thinking.
It'd be closer to four. You, you have to have your setback off the corner.
Yeah, that's right.
First parking space, it's four. You don't have enough for five, given just the basic math, what I wanted to set back from the corner, it'd be four spaces. That's the biggest concern.
That's a trade-off, is they're requesting, they, they, if you don't do this, then they're requesting more, a greater relief request on the parking front.
And as, I'd like to note, as we go through this, the planning bureau's recommendation is for other parking lots to be cut out of this.
And I would say this overall would be the top concern of the application. I mean, the applicant should really consider reconfiguring this building, whether it be less units, you know, changing the placement on the lot. You know, just a lot of concerns.
That is less than a block away. It's a stone's throw away. I just want to make sure everybody knows that that exists. Within two hundred feet of what we're talking about. It's animal parking with the sidewalk against the property. The only difference is that it's public parking.
Well, and, and originally it was the marketplace development plan, development plan at some point. But it was originally on the marketplace land development.
Yeah, I just make sure that everyone is aware that it exists within two hundred feet. It's exactly what is being proposed. It's two hundred feet away. It's been there for a long time. There's been no issues whatsoever. And I just, as, just as a human thinking person, it's hard to understand how that actually differs. In any real way from what's being proposed.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman, my name's Matt, I'm attorney. Sorry. I'm an attorney for the applicant here, and I just wanted, I just wanted to note, you know, a large portion of the planning commission's objection, I think, to this building. Was the safety concerns with respect to these parking spaces and the fact that the vehicles would have to back into the street. And I wanted to draw your attention to some recent projects in the city, such as the seven hundred block of North Third Street. Where they installed a number of electric vehicle charging stations, every single one of those spaces backs onto Third Street, which is a main thoroughfare. It is, you know, that street is much more traveled and it goes to one of the busiest intersections of a Forrester Street. Which is, you know, very different than what we're, the street that we're proposing to do this on. So if it's a safety concern, you know, I don't think that that project ever would have been passed in the first place of Third Street. So I, I think that there's a number of other examples that we could point to. State Street from second to third, every single one of those spaces backs into a one-way street. So I just wanted to draw that to your attention. Thank you.
Now a note from a justification standpoint for variance, if it's done somewhere else, doesn't necessarily give a justification.
I'll be honest, I, I'm not opposed to this layout. Of, you know, I, I do understand how it's, the look is a little bit different from the rest of the character of the neighborhood. I do understand that piece of it, so I have to think about that some more. But a lot of the configuration, I, I don't really have issues with. Unless I'm missing something here, but.
Any questions? Asha, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this right now.
All right. Staff, you have anything else on?
Nothing to add for now.
Move the building two, which is on the north side of Carter Street between Fourth Street and Marion's.
Uh, building two is a similar building. One thing I'd like to note real quick though, I understand the cookie cutter reference and the copy and paste reference. Previously noted, these buildings were designed to work with what we have. previously noted, these buildings were designed to work with what we have. And not just in marketplace, but in Capitol Heights. We end up with narrow elongated buildings to accommodate two-bedroom, two-bath units rather than the overpopulation of one-bedrooms and studios like everyone else is doing. This building sits closer to the street and has parking in the rear, like, as we have the amount of space required. Provides thirteen spark parking spaces for the twelve apartments. And also the exterior facade of these, as Rich will attest to, each one of these will have different architectural appearances on the front. The general footprint will stay the same, but they won't be, you know, red brick and black hardy board on every single one. They'll be altering. Uh, and I believe in the Capitol Heights packet we gave, you know, there's two other alternates. There's one where if you just simply change the brick color and the hardy, but then there's one that shows that if you actually move the balconies over, change the facade and split it three ways. And that, that's the plan the whole way through is that these do not appear identical. Just want to address that.
Could I make a recommendation just for zoning purposes? You're really going to have to address, you know, why this design works for zoning purposes as opposed to the one that's referenced that was previously proposed and which had the same number of units? I mean, that, that's, I'm going to suggest that's going to be material to the zoning board simply because of the provision. It has to be the least relief available. What, and so?
Yep, and I think on that, we would note that that one never.
Okay, but that's going to be, it's just going to be a fact.
That's a good point about demonstrating the least relief.
Right, that, I mean, that's where you're, you're going to have another thing to compare it to, and I'm just, you need to be ready to address that. So.
Jacob, you have any more to add?
Um, so just a general comment on most of the sites in this, that way we don't keep repeating the same comment for each building. Just a general recommendation is we recommend that the applicant build most of the buildings up to the prevailing setback of each site. So basically in layman terms, you know, these buildings are matching the properties that are adjacent nearby. So not like suburban style, larger setbacks. I do know that some of the sites, you know, do have kind of larger front setbacks. We believe that would be a pretty simple modification that we can discuss with the applicant a little bit further. That, that would be including the townhomes, different sites. And that would also provide more useful space potentially in the rears buildings. But other than that, you know, for the request of relief for the use, these development standards, we would note that it is appropriate. You know, we do recommend, you know, these are all challenging lots. That's why they've been abandoned for fifty-plus years. So just generally, you know, we are supportive, but just minor modifications of most of these buildings.
And any questions?
No.
Amy?
No.
Asha?
No.
Staff, you have nothing more to add to building two?
Nothing additional.
We want the building three, which sits on the north side of Carter Street, between William Street and Fourth Street. That one, you need to tell us about that one.
Yep, building three is a similar twelve-unit apartment building. This one will not, does not have the ability to have onsite parking, given the design. Uh, this is the the eastern portion of these lots only sit about their, they have shown on the, uh, planning bureaus report as forty-eight feet. Our survey marks have fifty-four feet. They're very shallow on the east side, and we are actually working with a property owner to acquire three additional lots to make this building work. Yeah, we'd be acquiring three additional lots to make this building work, given the current layout. So parking for this would be at the surface parking lot, catty corner to the building. You would cross over Alder and it's right at the corner of William for the parking spaces.
Um, and just a staff comment on that. So if the applicant is acquiring different lots and consolidating the site, that's going to potentially change the zoning relief. So I would encourage the applicant, make sure that's finalized. I mean, it's a little late in the process.
It, it's listed on the.
Okay, okay, so you're, you're talking about what's in the application then?
Yeah, if you.
Apologies if I misheard you there.
Yeah, the, the parcel number is clearly noted. It's.
Okay, so you're, what's in the application? I thought you were just.
We have parcels currently under contract with HRA. We're, you know, privately outside of that, acquiring additional parcels from private sellers.
For clarification, the site that was submitted with this application, this will be the size, like this isn't changing. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because that would change a lot of things if it was changing. And again, just as the applicant noted, with the lot sizes, just, just to confirm these are correct, if this would affect your relief if there's measurements off. Because there was some discrepancies again with what the applicant had and what some of the tax parcel measurements were.
And any questions on building four or building three?
No, I don't have any question.
Amy?
No.
Asha, any questions on building three?
No.
Applicant and staff have any final comments?
No final comments.
I, I would just note, I assume it's here, but I haven't looked at your package. But for zoning, you're going to need proof of each of those lot acquisitions, whatever your arrangement is right now.
Uh, it should have been supplied.
It may be there. I haven't studied your package.
Yeah, Jacob, you, the, from Kessler?
Yeah, so Kessler did provide, one of the property owners did provide information. There was for apologies, number of building sites here. There was a few sites where there was actually acquiring property that was owned by other individuals, but the deeds weren't provided or permission. I did end up catching a little bit late, so I do apologize to the applicant.
And it doesn't have to be a new deed, but it has to be something that shows that if your plan is approved, they will actually execute on that arrangement.
Yeah, so yeah, that, that is for this site. Believe it would be apologies here. I do know there's a few sites. I'll point it out a little further, but there's a few sites here where they're looking to acquire property where the, where the individual didn't sign on the application. So if they were to get relief, that would basically void it. So I'll, I'll look through this and confirm with the applicant which properties those are. It's in this report, but just apologies, a number of sites. Can't recall off the top of my head.
Just to clarify, it's three parcels. It's this parcel and then two where the parking lot are, and it would all be from the same seller.
Okay, but, but it just can't be a letter. It's got to be a binding agreement. The board got burned on one of those. And they, 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 they were pretty unhappy.
All right, let's move on to voting four, which is located on the northern side of Safer Street. Spans from William Street on the west to Fourth Street, right on the east. Jacob, what do you have?
Building four, this is where the applicant's actually proposing a food hall. So this is where the relief for the use gets a little bit different. I see your face. It's not defined in the zoning code. So they're basically having different restaurants in a market style. So kind of how Broad Street Market is with food service. So the relief will be for a use that's not specifically prohibited, which is a special exception. Uh, so the, and I spoke with the applicant. They originally mentioned farmer's market. Our zoning code clearly says a farmer's market selling produce. So since this will be more food service, you know, it's basically a food hall. So that's a special exception, not a variance, a little bit of a lesser relief for the use aspect. And then the development standard relief for the building site. And we'll be, you know, we feel this is very appropriate in this location, right by Broad Street Market. It'll be more of kind of a low impact. And then in additional, there'll be some relief for the off-street parking. And just, just a note on the off-street parking, whenever we have a use that's not defined, the parking requirements, we find the closest use to something that is defined. So we went with the, the requirements for a farmer's market, which is two spaces per tenant. So they're proposing five tenants, so that would require ten spaces. And they're providing five of the spaces at one of their parking lots, so the relief is for five off-street parking spaces. But just to give a little clarification on that.
Yeah, you wish to elaborate any more?
Yep, uh, this building in particular has been one of the first things that we designed after obtaining the marketplace lots. This, you know, I have personally, over the last few years, built two buildings or rehabbed two buildings to help Broad Street Market tenants grow to that six and seven day a week availability, rather than just the three days per week. And in both instances, there's several other tenants that want to be able to grow. And for us, it's what better way to help than, than give them something that's comparable price, that's seven days a week, that has ample seating and has, you know, outdoor space, indoor space, gives them a little bit more flexibility on the interior, will be set up for them, ready to go. Uh, we have currently two potential tenants that have submitted that they will lease space if this is approved and built. Uh, they are, one is actually on Second Street now. It's Taco Amigos. Uh, they would like to have a second location. Potentially having this as their only location, because it'd be much cheaper for them. And another one that currently has two locations and they have one in the market, but they want that, you know, they, they don't get the seven-day-a-week availability out of that, so that, you know, for them to move over and pay a hundred dollars more, it's a, it's a big plus for them. This has been extremely well received by the public. It's been extremely well received by the HOA. We just feel it'd be a great addition, the area there. And for the parking relief, would note that everyone's been to the market. It's a lot of foot traffic. Everyone's parking down through Verbeck aside, and we, you know, figured that this is going to be picking up a lot of the parking or a lot of the people from the market already. And on the days that the markets close, you're going to have all those parking spaces available for use.
And you have any comments or questions?
Yep, uh, looks like your rendering is modeling in the style of the Millworks building. About the parking, I do. So really, my biggest question just has to do with how, how's it going to work? Um, having, so you're going to have a couple of parking lots that'll have like six spaces or, you know, a handful of spaces in them. And this building is a public use building, right? It's not, we're a residential.
Correct.
So how do people park in those parking lots if it's being shared with people that have?
We, we were donating, uh, with, so everyone else would be via a parking pass for the, the general use uh, for the other park, for the residential use. That would be a parking pass or something that we'd give them for an assigned space. For this, we designate five spaces with a sign that says for market voting use only.
Okay, all right. That helps me out there, because I don't think Safer Street doesn't have any on-street parking. Right, I was just trying to think if there's any additional, just general public parking in that area, and I don't think. But you do have the, the, you do have the public lots.
You have the public.
Gravel, whatever.
Well, the gravel one's touchy, because that's the one that was.
We know.
Yes.
But there is other available parking areas, pretty, basically across the street, but very close by, within a block.
Amy, voting four? Asha, you have any comments?
Not at the moment.
Staff, anything else on voting four before we move on?
No additional comments.
We're going to go to lot five, which is on the eastern side of William Street, south of Riley. Staff, you have? You want to tell us about lot five?
So this, this, uh, building five is mixed-use, multifamily dwelling. Uh, so for this, with some of the other mixed-use buildings in the proposal, the applicant likely have to come back for additional zoning relief, depending on what the commercial use may be. You know, we do feel the, the multifamily use is appropriate here. And generally speaking, to, for most of these project sites, being near the market, kind of a, the area is a little bit higher intensity where we think, you know, multifamily would be more appropriate, you know, in these locations. And, and again, we'd recommend that the setbacks be brought up to the property line in the front as well. And an additional comment too, I believe this one where it was a little unclear the number of bedrooms for this site, so we would recommend some type of exterior rendering is included, as with, it is for the other buildings in the application, just for consistency's sake, and so the public and you guys can get a better idea of what's being built.
All right, Matt, what do you want to add?
Uh, I apologize for the square footage is not being listed on each unit, nor the, the breakout of what they'll be. Um, so this one, just for clarification, I believe it was noted in our packet will be a term that I actually generally did not like to use, but now we have a little bit better guidelines. This would be workforce housing. Uh, the fair market rent rates go anything under eighty percent. Eighty percent to one-twenty is what the city has now adopted as a guideline for workforce housing. So these units would be built within that range. And I can, prior to the next hearing and prior to zoning, have floor plans and square footage as listed. I'm not sure if it was, if there's an error on the submission, or I know we have it, I just don't know why it's not on.
And I rescind my last comment. This building is built up to the setback. My apologies.
Amy?
No.
Asha?
No.
Just again, for zoning, you, you're going to need something that this three-three-three-one Riley Street owner, some kind of reference. This is saying you're going to, the parking's going to be related to them, to working with them. Did I read that correctly?
This one, um, this is where they're going to have to attach. So three-three-one Riley isn't part of this development.
They're not helping with the parking situation. They're helping with the attachment.
Yeah, there's, that, that note in there is just that they're needed coordinate with attaching to their dwelling. That can get a little tricky.
And just on that note, with this, this lot in particular, I don't have the whole image up in front of me again. It's one of those ones that it's too narrow facing Riley to provide even two townhomes. It's only about thirty feet wide. And then you have that depth for the better part of sixty feet. You have thirty foot of depth coming off of William Street back. So this is a very weird, awkward lot that, you know, we've done the best we can to try to put something in there that's actually going to work. That's not, there's going to be one random townhouse on a corner.
And I would definitely agree with the applicant. These are very difficult lots to develop. Definitely ripe for some type of relief.
And we just felt with it being on Riley Street, that it would, the first floor commercial would help bring back what was once there. And this was much heavily used, much more heavily used corridor previously. And I know the previous administration and the current administration talks with them, the vision is that Riley Street become more of a mixed-use street.
Let's move on to the Marion Street Townhome, which are located on the east side of Marion Street, halfway by the middle of the block with Riley Street Carter Street on the south. Jacob, what do you want to tell us about that?
Uh, so one comment regarding, I guess. Identifying needed zoning relief. Um, so I would encourage the applicant to provide a little more detail on the site plans regarding. What the impervious footprint's gonna be for these homes. Um, not sure if this includes like the front porch that's shown on the rendering. Um, so that could affect the setbacks, uh, potentially. Definitely, you know, indicate that just because when they go develop this, get to the land development, we might find out they need. Uh, additional zoning relief or they're requesting relief that's not necessary. Um, which could delay them as well further in the process. Um, and just a general comment, um, again, this one, actually, we do recommend they. Move up to the, uh, prevailing setback width in the front, um, to match the existing townhomes in the area. Uh, be more appropriate to urban design, not suburban. Um, and even potentially. If they were to come up to the prevailing front setback, uh, the applicant could potentially, uh, provide parking in the rear. Um, for these townhomes, uh, so they could possibly have a onsite parking pad. Um, since there is that rear access, I know it's not shown on the, the site plan, um, but there is an alleyway behind these homes, uh, that. They could potentially access. Again, I'm not, I haven't done, you know, we did general measurements, um, but definitely would encourage the applicant to. Look into that and consider that to provide additional parking.
Uh, just on that note for the Marion Street Townhomes, there is not because there is. That existing road that is there, the way the land, the existing land development plan is recorded. Is each parcel actually butts into that recorded road. We would not be able to create by development standards, we would not be able to create parking accessible from the rear because we'd be driving over someone else's property. We'd have to get an easement for every single house.
Yeah, I would say it does get, it does get fuzzy up there like. Cause I believe that the parcels, they do go over that. So that would perfect that. Um, and they do, they do parallel park, um, on the side of where the townhomes are proposed, um. But generally also, I mean, even if they can't provide the rear parking by changing it, um, by moving these houses forward. Um, there'd be a more useful backyard. Um, right now there's a nine-foot backyard. I don't think that's a very useful space. Um, so if, you know, by moving it forward, you know, you would have a more appropriate form. And then there'd be a more functioning, uh, rear property as well if it's not being used for parking. Um, again, that's a comment overall for this whole, for all the sites is to do more urban appropriate setbacks.
On that, I would note, so the four-foot porch is not shown on that footprint. So it'd be an eight-foot setback to the porch. We would have no issues moving that to a four-foot setback. So you'd have four feet to the porch. And the four foot shown additional, we can update their renderings prior. So you, you get a thirteen-foot backyard instead of nine.
Any comments?
No.
And one thing noting on these, these are affordable. These six are.
And again, for the relief here, um, nothing for the use. This is all related to development standards and actually the density. Uh, where the fifteen hundred square feet, um, these are pretty small lots.
That by affordable, you mean workforce housing?
No, these are affordable.
Asha, you everything?
No, I don't have anything right now.
And again, hashing out details of what affordability is and. How are they gonna maintain it being affordable? These are all gonna be things that are gonna come up in land development. Um, you know, cause anyone can say it's affordable. I'm not saying the applicant's doing that, but, um, we've had, had people say it's affordable. And we're like, okay. How's it prove it? So would encourage the applicant to maybe. You know, provide some sort of additional documentation of how or what their plan is gonna be to maintain them as affordable.
Isn't that something that should be incorporated into that city, the city's document about their affordable housing?
Affordable housing ordinance, yes.
Wouldn't you, that would be appropriate to incorporate it into that?
There's, there's a proposed amendment to confront accounts on that.
I mean, that's how you, that's how you enforce it. If you really want it to happen and continue.
And we've been doing discussions like, how do we do that? I know there's a Sycamore Street project that we approved. We're still. Working that out. Um, who does that? Who enforces it? Um, that's. Haven't figured it out.
Our research showed that regardless of all of the. Public discussion of affordable housing, when you go through Pennsylvania to find anyone who's managed to actually legislate it, good luck. Um, but there is a new affordable housing state law that was adopted in June. Which creates certain benefits and credits to go with it. So whether that's gonna be implemented and how, that's to be seen.
There, there is a reason we didn't try to attach this to bill sixteen in twenty twenty. I mean. From, from the get-go, I, we, I said, was Daniel working on that. And the way it was adopted. You knew right away there's gonna be challenges to it and hiccups. So we'd rather just present it as is. You know, define what we're calling affordable when we go in front of the zoning board.
And I would encourage, you know, just have, I, I know it's hard to predict what the rental rate's gonna be in the future, but try to have ballpark figures, things like that. Prepare for council.
Yep, council, right. Right, Asha?
Let's move on to the Fourth Street North End Townhome, which is appropriately located on North Street. Lots of, uh, uh, Raleigh in the north, Calder in the south, look a lot like the Marion Street.
Similar comments here, um, encourage the setbacks new forward. Other than that, don't see any, any major issues here. Um. Again, there's also encourage the applicant to just, just double check some of the measurements here as that would affect, uh, the request of relief. There was, there was again, some, some discrepancies as well. Um, and. I get it, county information, uh, is not always reliable. And I would say also the, the renderings for the townhomes, um, if you look at. What setbacks are being shown, like a twelve-foot step back. Um, so these renderings show a more. Most, more likely a lot closer, a smaller setback in the rendering. So, um. You know, the renderings look pretty nice. That's not a twelve-foot setback likely there. And it's hard to guess just looking at it, but. That is likely a smaller setback shown there in the front.
And again, we will update, uh, show the porches, uh, and change that. On these, so I believe these are the five next to the church. Uh, we'll discuss to see if we wanna move that to that four-foot setback rather than the eight. Uh, here, the eight foot might be what we actually want to shoot for.
No questions.
Jamie?
These are all two bedrooms?
Yes.
They're all two bed.
I know we're on a different packet now, but just to clarify on Capitol Heights, those are three bedrooms.
Asha?
No questions?
Jacob, anything else before we move on?
No additional comments.
These are, these are but building three.
They would be at the rear, yes. You'd have the building, the driveway, the parking spaces. Vegetative screening and then the townhouses. And I believe there'd be a little bit of separation also.
And this would be a budding building two. Lot of buildings.
Alright, now we're gonna move on to Fourth Street South End Townhome, which is located on the eastern side of Fourth Street. Between the blocks, uh, between the Calder Street in the north and Safer, Safer Street on the south. Jacob, what do you have?
Um, no additional comments here. I mean, this is pretty much a north and south end or. Similar, same design, same lot sizes. So we would have. Same setback, same comment on that. So.
And I believe on these, we, um. Right now, and we'll make sure we, yeah, we are showing twelve foot. These, we probably would be amenable to the four-foot change to give. Little bit more of a backyard. This, this butts up against that big warehouse that sits on Marion Street that the Sandwichman guy uses currently. Um, so it, having more than ten feet in the rear to the backside of a brick building. Uh, if we can get to the fourteen, I think that's what we, we change it to.
Do we need to have angled spaces in these various parking lots?
Uh, they can be changed. Yeah, there, there's enough room on all of these to change.
Yeah, I was looking at that. I'm like, I don't even think you need to do angled, really. You could just do.
Straight in.
Normal straight.
Yeah, and I believe that's one of, uh, one of the bureaus.
Yeah, cause in the, in the code, when you have two-way, you're not supposed to have angled spots. Like it's tricky navigating, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and then you could adjust. That's my only comment about all of the parking lots.
Amy?
Nope.
Asha?
I'm good.
Just one thing to note on those, uh, if you can see it on there, the brick walkway is there. Uh, this is a building that was recently acquired by Millwork for their extension or whatever you wanna call it. Um, so we're incorporating the brick walkway there. So that way the townhomes, you know, they're not going through someone's backyard. They can walk on the sidewalk and then walk right to the parking spaces. They don't have to go around the block.
Jacob, do they need to provide any sort of screening along that walkway since it's right up alongside somebody's home?
Technically, I mean, that would be development. So, yes, um. I know we didn't address that in the brief, um.
I'm gonna think about.
Yeah, and we'd wanna see definitely in the land development plan, um, a lot more details of what this brick wall, walkway. The dimensions of it, what it's getting, the material, what it's gonna look like.
They're gonna put any lighting? Uh, another thing though.
They have lighting on the backside of the building.
Okay.
That, that's where that makeshift mural is right now, that, uh.
Yeah.
Tare on someone else painted on there. So, yeah, I believe they have lights. Back through that whole way.
Jacob, you have anything else?
No additional comments.
So the sixth space Marion. Street parking.
It, it'd be that same. Same print with the town.
Okay.
Uh, one twelve.
Yes, I see. It's on the eastern side of Safer. Between the blocks, uh, the block that has Carter Street in the north is safer in the south.
Uh, so the comment with Ann, angled spots, we wanna see those, um, straightened up. Additionally, this, uh, lot has. Has the space to be narrowed a little bit to give that, uh, buffering for the screening, which would obviate part of the variance. Um, and also would help with some of the, just some of the stormwater issues, um, cause the drive aisle, they can actually bring that down to twenty-four feet. Um, instead of the twenty-eight.
Just for clarification, we're on the sixth space Marion Street parking lot.
Yeah, LD one twelve.
One oh nine.
One oh nine, oh. Oh, that's an eight. Oh.
I was open to that one too.
Thank you.
Um, and, and one, one concern with this lot, um, is it is, it's sandwiched between two buildings. Um, I think I'm on the correct one. Sorry, let me just double check. This is the correct one. Thank you. Um. Yes, this is sandwiched between, um, two buildings that are, I believe, three or four stories in height. Um, so there could, this something what the engineer to look at in the land development plan with. Some of the visibility coming out of here, um, with the sight lines here.
Yeah, I, I would note that the, the sidewalk there, um. Believe is almost eleven feet wide. The, if you look at the adjacent building, the warehouse next to it. Uh, so this, as far as the visibility, um, this is where the Sandwichman guy has his bakery currently. He has that big garage door out front that he pulls in and out of all the time. Um, and it has a particularly wide sidewalk coming down there. I wanna say it's between eight and eleven feet. Um, and these parking spaces was actually set back a little bit from that. We have extra space. Uh, on the depths, especially now they're creating ninety-degree spaces. So we probably have about five foot of additional visibility there. Um, and then the parking spaces, I would note on against that warehouse building. There, as noted, uh, there is enough room for the vegetative screening, but that would most likely be bollards and vegetative screening combined. We believe it's gonna be required.
And something nice here too, I mean, the size of these buildings, um. You know, you're not gonna be shining headlights into like residential houses. Actually, kinda serves as a buffer in its own, um. And just an additional comment for basically all the parking lots. Um, I know in the past, uh, at zoning, um, you know, cause you're requesting a variance. For the use of having a parking lot, um, you know, without. Basically not having another structure, another use. So it's like a standalone use as parking. Um, so that's the variance being requested for. All of these standalone lots that aren't being consolidated with something else. Um, so that can be challenging, um, with zoning for the justification. I know here it's being directly used for these houses. Um. So just kinda making applicant aware too, that that's. If they can provide, you know, additional information as with all the variance requests, um, could be helpful as well.
Who would own the lot at the end of the day? Because if the houses are individually owned, unless it's somehow a deed right.
I believe the way we're looking at it is we would be establishing. Be establishing a new HOA.
Go through an HOA?
Okay.
Yeah, and definitely providing that as, as if you get in the land development process, um, hashing out those details. Cause those questions are gonna come up. You know, we're gonna wanna know who's maintaining these things.
Yeah, and cause in this acquisition of all these lots, we actually acquire. Other lots that are currently used by the other HOA that we have to have agreements with that. We're, we're buying them, but they're currently using them.
Yeah, I apologize for my confusion a little bit ago. I was just looking at the, I'm, I'm good. I made my comments about the parking lot.
You're the only guy.
Nope, I don't like it.
Jamie?
Good.
Asha?
I'm good, thanks.
No additional comments.
Alright, let's move on to the eighth space Calder Street Parking, which is located. Um, northeast corner of Calder and Marion.
So my first comment on this, um, I know the applicant, they didn't include parcel numbers for some of these parking lot sites. Um, so it was a little unclear exactly what parcels are being included, but looking at the measurements, it appears that fourteen oh five Marion Street. Um, would be part of this site, um, which if it is, um, it is owned by an individual that's not, hasn't signed on this application. Um, so they will have to get permission from them. Uh, it's owned by Ms. Deborah Porter. Um, according to Dolphin County Tax Records, uh, so the applicant, they will have to be agreeable, um, to get, you know, to even apply for their request. Um, so they, you know, the applicant will have to get that signature from her if this is included.
It's, uh, it's not. It's illustrated incorrectly. On LD one oh one, it's illustrated correctly. It's on the first two parcels. The, it's just, I, I know what happened with my draftsman here is as you can see, if you look at LD one oh one. The, the block is shown and then the parcels are shown and the configuration is extremely off. So it makes it look like this parking lot's a lot bigger. So when he put it on the LD one, one twelve. Uh, he put it onto the wrong parcel. Um, the measurements are off a little bit too. And that will be corrected and updated. There is enough space as shown for the configuration, but you wouldn't have that. Long neck and you'd have about four foot.
And I think that would change the, I think you have sixty-four feet. I think that would change.
Yeah, it's, it's forty-four feet.
Okay, forty-four. Yeah, and just another comment for this lot. I know the, the applicant mentioned from the rear there, um, that drive aisle is private. Um, you know, definitely would encourage seeing a possibility of getting access from there with an easement as opposed to Calder Street. Uh, just to preserve some more on-street parking, um, reduce an additional curb cut. Um, you know, even potentially, you know, if they could get easements for the rears of some of these townhomes, um, maybe they could work out some. Parking agreement with the residents. You know, at the existing homes where they would be amenable to having those access easements, um, just, just a consideration.
They, and that, that can just be addressed right now. They, they're not amenable to that. It was kind of a no way in hell type deal.
Then definitely, um, you know, just to the applicant, just be sure to get these revised for this site in particular, because this is, that, that affects the zoning relief being requested.
Any questions?
Nope.
Jamie?
No.
Asha?
No.
Matt Jacob, you everything before we move on to the forty-four space?
Was that the one, I just wanted to check, that was being recommended for two townhomes instead of parking?
Yeah, so that was just a recommendation for the mayor at the six space lot. You know, more different use that would be more appropriate would be townhomes. Obviously, we're aware parking is going to be a huge issue with the residents for this application. It's our job to give a recommendation, what would be most appropriate in the zoning code. That's why that comment has been provided in there.
Yeah, and that, that's why I wanted to bring it up now, because I know this is gonna, these notes are gonna carry, and this discussion's gonna carry through to the zoning hearing board and, and addressing that now, that taking away parking spaces to create additional without parking spaces is a little ludicrous.
Yeah, Jacob, for your benefit, Jacob, I'm not gonna mention that. He might be, I mean, that's his issue, as he tells everybody.
Right.
All right, let's move on to the last one, which is the forty-four space parking lot, which is on the, uh, western side of William Street. I mean, the, uh, blocks, Calder Street on the north, Safer on the south.
Um, so for this one, um, I'll start with the same comment here. This, so there is, um, at thirteen twenty-eight William Street, uh, there is a dwelling unit that's active, uh, on this proposed site. Um, again, the applicant, I, I'm assuming it's going to be demoed, um, to create this lot. Obviously, it's, it's about pretty much in the middle of the thirty-four space, uh, parking lot area. Um, so part of the application to get the zoning relief, they're gonna have to get permission, uh, from that individual for this relief, uh, to have a parking lot. Um, so they'll have to actually sign off on the application, um, as well. And I do apologize to the applicant and the board that I didn't identify this earlier. Um, just in the length of the review, it, I noticed that. Um, because typically, typically, we don't have, typically, we wouldn't even bring an application before here if it's not signed by the owner. Usually, you gotta let the applicant know right away, hey, they need to sign to be permission to be here. Um, so that, that's, that's important, because even if they got relief, it would essentially be void without their permission requesting it.
It's gonna be a standing issue at zoning.
Yeah, and we'll get the agreement. It, it's the same, uh, as the previous parcel with the, uh, building three, it's the same owner. It's different entities, same owner. Um, it's three different entities, own three different parcels, but it's the same owner at the end of the day that will sign off on all three of them.
And just general comments, um, for the parking lot, um, again, the same thing in the parking lot, we knew parking is going to be a big issue. You know, we would like to see at least the configuration be changed. I do know there's, uh, with the ten space parking lot, you know, to reduce curb cuts, we'd like to see more internal connection of the parking lot. Um, that way you preserve more of the on-street parking. Probably wouldn't be much of a net gain since you would lose some spots, um, within the parking lot. Uh, and definitely, you know, encourage, if we don't have to have as much as a parking lot for better development, uh, definitely would reduce the burden of the request for the variance.
And, and just to address that, I met with, uh, Mr. Knight on this, and kind of snaking that parking over would create a loss of, I think, when we, me and him just kind of hand drew it to one day, it, it'd result in about eight, and then you would be turning around in that bottleneck and then exiting back in to the drive aisle in between the other ones. I don't feel that it would help that additional curb cut. Yes, you're, you're losing an additional on-street parking space, but there's no houses that sit on Calder. Um, you know, the Susquehanna Art Museum parking lot there now, that has just been repaved, resurf, you know, brand new. There's that's the only use. I see you have Safer Mark, you have a few houses that sit, uh, down James Street, and I just can't see that that curb cut's gonna hurt much.
Yeah, and that will be one of those conditions that we usually, uh, have. So that'll be part of the discussion, um, at the next meeting, I'm sure, as well.
I, I think we'd actually be at a net loss at that point, instead of have, if we, if we snake, snake that in, we'd lose up to eight spaces potentially to gain two on-street parking.
And any comments?
Um. No.
Jamie, you have any?
No.
Asha?
No, not at the moment.
All right. Jacob, you have any more to add to that?
Uh, nothing additional.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Throw out my seat, your name and your address and.
Uh, Richard Brubal, um, seventeen oh four Fox Hunt Lane, Susquehanna Township. Um, but I did live in the city for a long time, uh, as, as a lot of people know. Um, I just wanted to make a few comments. First, I want to say thank you, um, thank you for having this meeting tonight. City meeting here for this time to make this happen. Thank you for, my fellow citizens for coming in, um, and saying a few words. I mean, you know, uh, you have somebody here that actually cares about the city, cares about what's happening, cares about their neighborhood. And I think that, uh, they should be credited for that. And of course, also, I think we should say thank you to Matt, um, and the team and Chris, um, for what they're doing. I mean, so how often do you have somebody that comes in, uh, to do this? I mean, does this happen a lot? You would have so many, um, properties to be developed. And from where I lived on Harris Street, um, I'll tell you, you walked up the street and there's a lot of, you know, empty lots. There's a lot of places where it's been that way forever, it feels like, right? So, um, and what Matt started with, a lot of these lots have been empty since the seventies, right? So I just wanted to make a couple of comments related to this. So, um, you know, we're talking about parking, like, so why isn't there a public works project to make parking, right? You got, you got these guys paying to put a parking lot in, right? But why isn't there a public works project to do that? Why isn't the city putting in parking, right? I go to the Broad Street Market and I park in the gravel lot. Why isn't the city saying, hey, we'll, we'll pave that lot for you, right? And so I, I have to ask that question. Um, and then.
Three hours, I get to explain it to you.
Well, hey, I, I think it needs to be explained. I think it should be talked about. And I think that, uh, in a unique situation like this, right? Maybe we need to think outside the box a little bit. I mean, it's great that we're here. It's great with, with what everyone's feeling. Um, it's great that the city staff has gone through each one, but I feel like the, the, the way Jeffrey Knight and the staff are sort of looking at it is at, on one individual case at one individual time. Like, I can understand that, but you have a situation here where Harrisburg, the city, has an opportunity to build on these lots, to increase revenue, to increase people in the city, right? So why isn't there a way, I don't know, maybe, uh, somebody from the city gets assigned to help Matt make this work. And I mean, I know that's what we're trying to do now, but maybe there's just a different way we have to look at it when you have somebody trying to develop so much of the city, right? So I'm, I'm not going to talk all night. I know it's the end of the, end of the meeting here, but, um, you know, what these guys are getting into, I, I probably don't have to say this, but I want to, I mean, the cost of construction is ridiculous, right? It's just goes up and up and up, right? So the longer that Matt sits here talking about it, it's just gonna be more expensive tomorrow. So again, I'm not saying to like, just approve everything. You should talk about just the way we are, but it shouldn't become such a difficult process that it's years and trying to figure it out. There has to be a way that we can come together, work together, work with our neighbors, right? And figure out how we can make it happen. Figure out a way that the city could get behind it and say, we'll do the parking lot. Or you know what? A block away, there's parking on the street, just like what you're doing here, except for there's some little zoning ordinance that says you can't do that. And I mean, seriously, right? I'm sitting here, just getting into this tonight, just hearing a lot of this, uh, recently from Matt. And that sounds kind of ridiculous to me, right? I mean, I know we're trying to follow the rules. I know that we're seeing everything's right the way, the way the zoning is written, but.
It's the law.
It's the law, right? So, but sometimes laws need to change, right? Sometimes laws need to expand.
Don't get wiped away, we're after.
Sure.
You change the law, which people have the right to do.
Right.
In a process, but right now, the law on the books, the law on the books. And if you were going to the zoning hearing board, if you ask them to ignore it, your project won't fail.
I'm not asking you to ignore it. I'm just asking you to just think about it in a different way. So maybe that's what it is. Maybe there's a way that law gets changed, but it can't be something that takes years and years to do while these lots that are empty and the, you know, the city continues to decay around us. I mean, Matt's trying to do some things to make the city better. So I feel like everybody should be like, what can we do to help Matt? Like, what can we do to help them, right? So, um, just a couple of other quick comments. So, um, I know that, uh, there is a process that we have to follow, right? But I think sometimes like the process gets drug out so long. Um, it would be great if we could kind of just find a way to sometimes expedite things, right? Like, I know you guys aren't voting on anything tonight, but wouldn't you want to know, like, how do you really feel? Like, at least you said how you feel about something, but like, we walk out of here and we're like, we explained all this, but, but you guys don't always say like, hey, I agree, or hey, I don't agree. Like, you, you hear and we talk about it, but I feel like we talk about a lot of stuff, but like, let's just get to the point, right? Can he do it or not, right? Like, how do you feel? Like, when we go from a zoning, right? Can we say, yes, the planning commission agreed to this? Or that's, maybe that's what happens next week, right? Next week, okay. Yeah. And then one last thing, um, so I guess I just wanted to say, like, I know we talk about, like, what's appropriate in neighborhoods, right? But, and I know not all development would be appropriate, but when you hear what these projects are about from a, um, you know, from a, from a city, uh, growth, from a urban planning approach, Matt has a whole mix of different things in here that are exactly what a city needs. Exactly in a lot of ways what Harrisburg means, right? And when you think about the time that he has committed to this, where he's not making any money on anything yet, right? So eventually someday, Matt, you can make a lot of money off of this, right? But it's, it's such a, it's such a difficult process. I guess I just wanted to say up, get up here and just say, you know, um, if there's any way to make it easier, is that fair to say? Maybe that's not fair to say, but sometimes like, maybe that is fair to say. Maybe sometimes you do need to just take a step back and say, is there a way to think outside the box to keep it appropriate, but not drag it out for so long that, you know, nothing ever really seems to happen. So. Thank you.
Me, your comments about speeding this up, I don't think they rejected it outside of the table. Part of the reason we're here tonight is to try to speed this up.
Absolutely. And I would add that the city is spending resources to have these meetings. These things cost money to advertise. Um, they cost, you know, money for, if you have an additional zoning hearing board, it's, you know, thousands of dollars. So we are spending money, um, to accelerate this process or these extra meetings.
What are we still?
Well.
Then they drop it next week, right? Any other comments from the public? Have we mentioned the owner of the Sammy Man?
Yeah, that's me.
Oh.
I'm the one that owns that building that has that forklift that's been sitting there for twenty years. I wanna, I like what this guy's talking about, but one thing I don't agree upon is the parking situation on Marion Street. Nobody knows that street better than me. I've owned that bakery for twenty-five years and I lived across the street for almost forty years. And it's deceiving. When the market is busy on a Friday and a Saturday afternoon, the whole place is full. Uh, if you go there many, many nights, you'll, you'll see that the millworks has a function or something. It's really crowded. And then also we have the Arts Center down, the old Powell Building, which now has concerts. And those people park all the way up here, all in the, I mean, they draw thousands of people to these concerts. So this street is busy. And if you check with the police, you'll see many times there have been accidents from Safer and Marion Street, people having accidents. People jump the curb trying to get out of the market on Safer Alley by Fulton Street. They've had the tow trucks there to get people up. Also, people sometimes drive up Marion Street the wrong way. And Safer Alley is, is busy. You got the millworks there. They're going to that warehouse, picking up stuff to make beer and everything else. So I would just say, I agree with this gentleman. You have to be very careful about the parking situation on, at least on the thirteen hundred block of Marion Street. I'm not against what this guy's doing, but and then if we're gonna expand businesses there, people drive there. That's more. This gentleman here hit it right on the head. He's, he parks in Josh, Josh's lot when he goes to the market. Josh hates that. That's supposed to be for his employees. But his employees park there and sometimes they complain because there's, the lots are taken over. So let's consider that, because parking is, uh, you know, a lifestyle situation. And then the other thing I want to say is, nothing against this gentleman, but I think he should be held to the fire on, uh, affordable housing. Anyone who reads anything about buildings and what's going on, you have developers, and I'm not going to question their integrity. But they promise they're gonna have so many apartments that are gonna be, uh, you know, what, what they call it, the special rate. And then as they start building, oh my God, we can't do this. All the equipment, lumber's up forty percent. We can't get electrical boxes. Everything costs more. Next thing you know, the working people get screwed. So this guy's building a lot of places and he's gonna make money. So I think we have to make sure, as Mr., uh, Grover over there said, that you know, we, he's held to the standard of what he's promising and what is required by the law. Thank you.
My dear, with your important presence. Yeah, as far as the, uh, portable housing, I know that's, Asha Green, our, our fourth member here, who's here by phone, she's a member of city council. They are so that's definitely an issue. It's under, from Brown. Anything else?
Um, I'd like to just add, just moving forward, um, for the next meeting, um, so we'll have, uh, conditions prepared, um, you know, for the next um, meeting next Wednesday. Um, so just so the applicant's aware, board's aware, um, as the application, as we have it, uh, we'll be recommending approval on the Capitol Heights, um, for building two, three, and four, and the townhomes. Um, for building five, six, seven, eight, um, we just have concerns with the variances, meeting the criteria. And then for the marketplace midtown project, um, we'll be recommending, um, approval and conditions for all the sites with the exception, um, of building one. Um, so just to make the applicant aware, make the boards aware. So I'll be preparing a more in-depth case report for the, uh, marketplace application, because I know you just have the brief, uh, for now. So we do, we do have to consider, you know, these projects just as any other project, you know, that we get individually. I know it's lengthy. Um, but when we look at variances, we do have to review it in that way. Um, so I do apologize for the amount of time you'll have to review that case report. Um, since I haven't written it yet, since wanted to have this meeting first and kind of go over some of the discussions. Um, so expect that, um, on Monday, uh, for your reviews. I do apologize for the two days.
So just for clarification for everybody, you know, uh, Matt has described some of the things he's gonna update on some of these plans between here and next week. Do you have a sense, Jacob, that those updates that he's said he's going to provide, address some of the concerns or are these separate and apart from that?
Um, so I'm not sure. I'm, just to be able to, for his drafters, his team to make those changes and for me to receive that, I mean, I'm guessing it would be probably Friday or Thursday. So I, I won't be able to write the full report, um, with those revisions, unfortunately. Um, but you know, if there's conditions. But, you know, if there's conditions for those changes, I would assume that we could add those before zoning. And just, just a, what could happen with some of those changes? We might see that there's different zoning requests and that could be, that could be an issue. You know, that could lead to continuance recommendations to get those updates, to get a different report. So there is a possibility, you know, there could be further continuance, hopefully not. I think we have enough to kind of consider in a different discussion next week.
Yeah, for the people community that, as you know, next Wednesday, we have another meeting, we're voting on these things. Any final comments then? Jamie, Asha.
No, no comments.
So Mr. Chairman, just may I ask, do you think because of Joe isn't here, Vern isn't here, I kind of forgot what next week's going to look like? I mean, is, is it a full presentation again with them?
Oh, you think I'm coming?
You got these two, you have two members next week, these guys are gone next week, we just have them.
Yeah, though.
No, I get, I, I don't have an answer to that, I just, how, how you bring, which was a very detailed overview to the, the members that could not make it tonight. I, I just think maybe the members should talk amongst themselves about the practicality of how you want to hear it as a board between now and.
Okay, Jacob, you have any idea what else, I, I guess you did, what, what else is on the agenda next week? How many items?
Yes, unfortunately, there is other items on the agenda. So I have three zoning requests and then there's a land development, so it's four different items. So basically three though, because the land development is getting zoning relief, so. And when it's a little more, there might be some lengthy discussions, we do have like a recommendation for denial. And then there's the Shalom House where they're, that's the land development where they're converting that.
Okay.
Which is a good project, so hopefully that'll shorten the discussion, so.
Our fellow planning commissioners, commissioners that are not here did receive these briefs and packets of information, right?
I didn't give them paper copies of the briefs, just digital, since I wasn't sure if they were going to be there or not.
Yeah.
You know, you're still going to submit a summary of the recommended, you know, what your recommendation for approval or denial is, the conditions that might be on that, if there is an approval, right?
Yeah, that'll be on the, like, the similar format of our case reports. So I'll remind the members that aren't here that, you know, they do have digital access to what we have today, at least.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah. Members of the public here who haven't been, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll have minutes for them as well, which obviously doesn't cover everything. I'm not writing it word for it.
Noted. Balance accepted.
I'll, I'll bring a bottle of whiskey, you can't open it till nine, and then you can't leave till you finish.
You haven't come upstream now and then, of course.
Yeah, limited discussion, because, you know, if Joe and Vern are reading it and have questions, they could send a planning in between. You know, that may be of some help, but, but, you know, I don't know what their schedules are.
Oh, yeah, at the very least, you got to make sure they. All right. All right, after wishing Anna happy birthday.
Second.
All favor. See everybody next week.